Standing here, I'm feeling a little bit of deja vu. Or maybe just a little bit sick that we're right back where we were last spring. Although last year, it was I who was where Dr. Phillips' position is today, and it was he who stood in solidarity with those of us who were terminated. In doing so, Dr. Phillips knew he risked retaliation from an administration who has become nationally renowned for exactly that. But Michael always lives his values for standing up for others. In 2017, this award-winning scholar on the history of racial conflict in North Texas co-authored a letter in the Dallas Morning News imploring the city council to remove Confederate monuments that celebrated the darkest parts of our local history. In 2019, following the horrific El Paso mass shooting, one in which the violent extremists had ties too close to Collin College, Dr. Phillips spoke to the press about racial extremism as an expert on the subject, and was subsequently remanded by college administration. And in 2021, when a global pandemic still posed a threat to his colleagues, students, and the community he loves, Dr. Phillips spoke out again in support of those around him. Do you notice what each of these examples says about Dr. Phillips? He will always stand up against injustice. Dr. Phillips is not only a scholar, an expert on the blemishes in our history, but Michael is also one of the most actively engaged scholars in trying to right the wrongs for our future. It's for this reason that Michael is beloved by his colleagues and students alike. It's for this reason he was named Educator of the Year for the East Texas Historical Association, and it's also for this reason that he was fired. Michael always finds the courage to stand up for others. I would like to ask the members of the board to find the courage as well and reinstate Dr. Phillips. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brett Jones, a Collin County resident, former Collin College student. My sons actually attended Collin College as well, as did my wife, Dr. Suzanne Jones, who was also a former professor. Having lived here in Plano, I know all too well the rich history that this institution has in the community, and I've also seen the blemish, the blemishes that have been caused by recent events. And I need this community to know, and this Board of Trustees to understand, that those blemishes are not just internal. They now resonate outside of this area as well. As such, I'm going to read a portion of a letter that was sent to Saks and signed by 27 historians from across the state of Texas. Per the letter, "Colleges and universities serve a public purpose. As the AAU says, institutions of higher education are conducted for the common good and not for the further, not for the interests of either the individual teacher or the institution as a whole." Saks incorporates these commitments that universities must foster intellectual freedom of faculty to teach, serve, research, and publish. And the institution publishes and implements appropriate policies and procedures for preserving and protecting academic freedom. The non-renewal of Dr. Michael Phillips is the latest in a series of events that calls into question Collin College's appearance in this standing. Dr. Phillips, a widely published scholar, prominent public historian, and award-winning educator, reports that he was sanctioned by Collin College for signing his name in institutional affiliation on a petition to remove Confederate monuments in Dallas and for discussing the benefits of face masks and the context of past epidemics in American history. This non-renewal of his contract also overrides a recommendation of renewal by the College of COE. There could be reasons for denying reappointment for a faculty member, even the author of books and articles widely cited and referenced by other scholars in the press, one recently named Educator of the Year by the East Texas Historical Association, one whose fellowships from the Mellon Foundation, the American Council on Learned Societies, and Baylor University, whose publications have won awards with the East Texas Historical Association and the Texas State Historical Association. One has published 29 book reviews, served on 38 conference panels, and been an invited speaker for more than 55 public events. But the dismissal of such a respected historian raises the prospect that faculty at Collin College are evaluated on the basis of deference to university leaders and whether their public statements match the political outlook of administrators. Accordingly, we have grave concerns about the wisdom of any of our graduates working at Collin College and about the impact on the content of history courses taken by possible student transfers to our institutions from Collin College. And we hope that you, to Saks, take this letter as a reflection of our concern. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Adams, a former student at Collin College and a concerned member of the community. They say you can't put a price tag on our constitutional freedoms. Here at Collin College, however, the going rate for the First Amendment has become $70,000 in the sacrifice of your livelihood. This is not what Thomas Jefferson meant when he wrote the Declaration of Independence, that certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The constitutional rights and freedoms that are granted to all U.S. citizens are being competed and infringed upon by the administration of this college. How can all of you sit there and ask everyone in this room to pay in with our taxes to support the formalized procedures of bigotry and discrimination that reside within the halls of this formerly respected institution of higher learning? I didn't ask for my tax dollars to settle your lawsuits or your problems that you've created for yourself with your outdated and prejudiced ways of thinking. You should only be scared of the truth if the truth is something you need to be afraid of. And you shouldn't endeavor to silence those of us who want the truth in the open. What are you trying to hide, Collin College? What is it that you are afraid of your professors revealing with their constitutionally-protected freedom of speech? History doesn't repeat itself exactly. History is like a scratched CD that stutters and skips on a specific spot. It's the same note, it is slightly different melody. Without professors like Dr. Phillips to educate our students, our community, on the events of the past, flaws and all, we're going to keep scratching the CD further until it's unplayable, and then we're never going to be able to move forward as a society or as a community. I strongly urge all of you to reconsider the college's decision not to extend Dr. Phillips' contract. Obviously, appealing to a sense of right and justice isn't working anymore. So instead, do it because it's what our students deserve. We deserve professors who aren't afraid to speak up or to fight through the truth. A good professor doesn't teach you what to think. No, they teach you how to think, how to come to your own conclusions, and then to defend your conclusions and opinions for yourself. That's one thing I learned from the wonderful professors at this college. Those are the same ones, that you are now chasing away from your institution to the great detriment of our students and our community. Your silence speaks volumes. The community is listening, and by extension, the world is as well. Why aren't you? Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Frederick Dickens, and I'm the vice chair of the Collin County Democratic Party. I'm here to speak about the firing of several professors at Collin College. I honorably served in the Army for 23 years fighting for democracy and the very freedoms that some have weaponized for their agenda. In my view, colleges should foster an environment of mediocrity, risk-taking, and the engagement of ideas, where young minds are cultivated and developed into leaders of industry. These minds will then go on to lead their communities for the betterment of the world. How can students learn from professors who work in fear and have in the back of their minds that they could be next to be fired simply for speaking their minds, something they encourage their students to do every day? Unfortunately, at Collin College, professors work in fear. They worry if the president of the university doesn't agree with their personal perspective, they won't come back to work the next day. There's no open dialogue or respectful communication, just action. The most alarming thing for me is these actions seem to stifle diversity of thought. You see, diversity of thought makes future leaders well-rounded and ready to compete on a global scale. I did not serve this great nation to see us not properly prepare our future leaders for the rigors of a highly competitive world. But let me be clear. If these professors did anything illegal or immoral or unethical, I would be the first to call for them to be ousted. But their firing seems to come from a place of difference of thoughts, not from anything of substance. Collin College has much to offer, so much to be proud of, the world-class degree programs and curriculum, and professors are a huge part of that. Collin College did not get where it is today without the strength and quality of its professors. Do you truly think the best professors will come to work here now? Do you believe that all of this bad publicity that all over the state, all over the country, is going to entice more students to come to the college? None of the new degree programs and modern campuses around here will mean a thing if we lose our best professors, whether it's because of these ridiculous firings or from quality professors figuring that work at any other colleges and universities in the area. Professors have a choice. Students have a choice. You have a choice. Make the right decision and encourage the critical thinking, diversity of thoughts, and free speech in our professors that you ask of our students. Our colleges are based around the inclusion and diversification and thought of all students. Why not the professors as well? Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kim Diamond from Slant.
Good evening. I'm Kim Parker Diamond, Collin College graduate. I'm a Collin County resident, taxpayer, and I'm glad to be back at this podium. I had to have some major surgery. Oh, podium, sorry. One of the reasons that I love my freedom of speech is that I am a strongly pro-life Christian. I value my freedom to express my views in social media posts and in public activities. And even though views are controversial, and I know that they are, and I'm cognizant of the fact that if my freedom of speech depends on whether or not my views align with those of power, then my speech isn't really free at all. So when I defend free speech, I'm to some extent defending my own rights. But it's not self-defense that brings me here tonight. I am here to stand with Dr. Michael Phillips, a valued colleague, who I'm also proud to call my friend. There are any number of issues on which Dr. Phillips and I do not sign on. But I know him to be a man of integrity and principle. He's a gifted writer and scholar. He's a dedicated and talented teacher. He's acted courageously to protect his students, defend the rights of his coworkers, and tirelessly seeks to make our society more just. Collin College is a better place for his scholarship, his work as an educator, and his advocacy. But it doesn't seem to matter to those who would prefer that he be silent. Now, we live in a state where some people want teachers to publish their lesson plans a year in advance so that the public can know clearly what's going on in each classroom. The public, it seems, wants transparency in its educational institutions. Therefore, I find it ironic in the extreme that one of the things that Dr. Phillips has been disciplined for was publishing materials disseminated in a faculty meeting by the administration. Doesn't the community deserve to know what Collin faculty are being told to do in their classrooms? Especially when those instructions could have a direct impact on public health? If faculty could be disciplined for being transparent with the community that they serve, it's not the faculty who can be doing something wrong. Collin County's reputation here and nationwide is rapidly deteriorating. By the way, did you notice that Collin was one of two colleges called out in a retweet by Senator Ted Cruz on February 1st for its violations of faculty freedom of speech rights? Concerned liberals alike agreed that our constitutional freedoms protect us all. As someone who loves this college and pays taxes, I urge you to renew Dr. Phillips' contract and stop these vindictive attacks on freedom of speech.
Next person is Danielle Saint. I may have mispronounced that name. And if you would, tell us what city you're from, please, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
Uh, did it, how do you pronounce your last name?
Shannon.
Saint, okay. And the city you're from?
Plano.
Thank you.
Fortunately, I'm back because in the last several months since I've been here, the teachers are even more afraid to talk. So I'm once again reading off the hat of the faculty member who's afraid to say anything quite a while with you. I want to thank trustee Bob Collins for saying the quiet part out loud. On April 13th, 2015, Collins and the board were running for election to the Board of Trustees. They participated in a candidate forum hosted by the far-right Allen Barry patriots. At one point, the moderator asked what influence trustees had over what was talking classroom, and quote, "Are you aware of any effort or intentions among the administration or faculty or students to curtail American patriotism so as not to offend foreign students?" Did Mr. Collins or Mr. Warr vigorously defend the principles of academic freedom and free speech? Did they say the board should not dictate the content of courses in order to impose a political agenda? Of course not. Mr. Collins and Mr. Warr have sat in quiet approval as now four excellent faculty members have been purged over the last two years for engaging in constitutionally-protective expression, even while they hypocritically insisted that there is no First Amendment crisis at college. Did Mr. Collins and Mr. Warr object to the extremely ignorant xenophobic assumption of the question that foreign students are anti-American? Of course not. These two men never whispered a hint of concern when President Mackin admitted to critiquing his church predecessor and said he couldn't remember if he made a racist joke about not being able to tell two black teens apart from each other. In fact, they rewarded him for his violent behavior by giving him a contract extension. But Mr. Collins said something else which reveals why four professors with boards, excellent state evaluations, and five records in college service have been shoved out the door. Mr. Collins said Collin College does not have tenure by design. He said that if you had tenure, those Collins considers ultra-low, anti-capitalism, socialistic professors become entrenched, and they hire more tackles like them. He said that the contract system Collin College has makes it easier to get rid of faculty who dare express non-volk calling thoughts. Mr. Collins, firing press servers from a public college for their political reasons is unconstitutional. Mr. Warr, your silence regarding the assault on free speech is solid. The attitude of these two and the five other men on the board is not just anti-free speech, it's un-American. Collin County deserves better than the seven men on this board and its authoritarian administration. Thank you.
Good evening, Lord, and President Mackin. As you said, my name is Leslie Cunningham. I live here in McKinney. I also have a granddaughter at McKinney Boyd High School. I am not happy to be before you for the second straight year. I was hoping that you would have done the right thing and rescinded the egregious firings of three professors who had unimpeachable classroom performance, but they exercised their rights of free speech and free association. Not only have you not righted this wrong, but you've gone and fired another professor. I know you've received many statements of support for this professor, Dr. Michael Phillips. But here is another one, this one from my union, the Texas State Employees Union, specifically our university caucus. Quote, "The Texas State Employees Union represents teachers, students, student workers, and staff at all state colleges and universities. Our union is affiliated with the Communications Workers of America, which has 700,000 members, and with the AFL-CIO. TSEU is committed to upholding the principles of free speech, academic freedom, and freedom of association. These are First Amendment rights protected by the U.S. Constitution." This is an expression of support for Michael Phillips, a history professor at Collin College whose contract was not renewed. Professor Phillips' actions to speak publicly about his concerns regarding matters of the college is protected speech. This includes encouraging students to wear masks when inside to protect against COVID, his efforts to organize, and the long and important subject matter of his research. Retaliatory actions on the part of the college create a discriminatory and hostile working environment and do not belong in any workplace. TSEU calls on Collin College to reverse its decision and renew Professor Phillips' employment contract immediately. This is not the first time that Collin College has acted in a hostile manner towards its faculty. We strongly urge the college to review its employment practices in order to provide a working environment that protects all employees' rights. It signs sincerely, Judy Lugo, President of TSEU. Now, let me note that you have already spent some of my money, taxpayer money, paying off Professor Laura Burnett, who sued you. I believe there's another suit pending from Dr. Suzanne Jones. I hope that Dr. Phillips doesn't have to sue you. All you have to do is take the right and ethical action and avoid wasting any more of the taxpayers' money. Thank you for listening to me. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I've known Michael Phillips for many years. If I had to describe him in four words, the words would be integrity, intelligence, compassion, and above all, courage. Michael is not only beloved by his friends and family, but by the many students he has taught over the years. He is an accomplished author and an engaged and valuable member of the community. He deserves to be treated with respect and is and would be an asset to any teaching institution. Shame on Collin College for choosing to play politics and in so doing lose an exemplary faculty member. The students of Collin College deserve better. I will now read another statement. This is a statement by a faculty member who must remain anonymous for fear of retaliation. In fall 2021, Professor Michael Phillips was, among other disciplinary reactions, reprimanded for posting a picture of a PowerPoint slide that indicated that professors were not allowed to even encourage mask use among their students. In response, Collin County's head PR representative responded to the Dallas Morning News reported August 18th, 2021 that this flyer was inaccurate. What does that mean? That Michael Phillips, along with the two dozen or so of his colleagues in his meeting, would not hold explicitly that they weren't allowed to encourage masks? That administrators didn't repeatedly replay that same message to colleagues across the district? That the college refused to make signage that was strongly recommended masks, allegedly for fear of running afoul of the governor's orders? If, as the spokeswoman stated, this was inaccurate, why did this continue to be the ruling policy of Collin for the duration of the fall semester? Why was Michael Phillips reprimanded for encouraging mask use in his classroom? Collin College faculty have repeatedly been told that the college welcomes dissent and hard conversations despite all the evidence to the contrary. If that's true, the college should start by being honest. Stop hiding your unpopular policies from the view of the public. Stop firing employees for violating policies you're not even willing to own up to. Goodness and respect demanded. Integrity demands it. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Adam Bull, and I'm a teacher in Plano ISD, a member of Texas A&amp;T United, and a resident of Collin County. Tonight, I'm speaking in support of Dr. Michael Phillips, who is in effect being fired from his position over a suggestion to his students to take a deadly pandemic seriously. I believe Dr. Phillips to be the latest victim of a political witch hunt, one that takes aim at the health of the community, academic freedom, and the democratic rights of workers to speak freely and organize around their common interests. All of this is done in an effort by the Collin College Board to raise their own profile in what President H. Neil Mackin refers to as the quote "Amazonification of education." Shockingly, the leadership of this college wants to go in the direction of Amazon, a company whose workers pee in bottles while on shift because they aren't given enough time to use the restroom. Amazon is also a company found to be illegally union-busting by the National Labor Relations Board. I urge the board to change course and reinstate Dr. Phillips. Now, I teach high school seniors, many of whom will attend Collin College over the next several years, just like many previous waves of students did before them. For most of them, it is the best option due to the price and convenience of living at home. Fortunately for students over the past 14 years, they've had the opportunity to learn history from someone like Dr. Phillips, a scholar on local history who doesn't shy away from the ugly parts, like racism and pandemics, and uses the past as a way to build a better future. Refusing to renew his contract because politics oppose that of this board is an attack on the health of Collin College students and the community as a whole. I will strongly encourage any students of mine to consider different options for school next year. I will make it my personal goal to help students find other options post-high school besides going to a college that openly opposes freedom of speech, worker rights, and thinks pandemics aren't real. They all deserve to know who is causing the malaise spreading through campus. That would be the Board of Trustees. I also encourage my fellow educators to educate their students on the anti-labor and anti-democratic practices of the Collin College Board. They fired three other teachers last year for exercising their right to free speech. The next time elections for Collin College Board come around, I also encourage my fellow residents of Collin County to vote these people out. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Shiber. I'm a Teamster, and I'm for TSA. And I'm here to read a statement by a former Collin College student. As a fellow Collin College, I'm also an outstanding member of my community. I'm attending Columbia University and will graduate with my MFA this semester. I've been a National Museum Grant Award winner. I was named a Mercedes-Benz Emerging Artist in 2019 and was sent to a Taki residency in Berlin. In 2017, SMU Engaged Learning Fellow, where I was sent to France to study French and art. This whole time, I accredited Collin College for giving me a strong foundation and a springboard into my career. I still give credit to individual professors. I've been proud that my beginning was at a community college. But learning the recent events have made me ashamed. Punishing professors for speaking out against racism, for demanding justice for the historically latest franchise, for supporting science in the midst of a worldwide pandemic is deplorable. Separating yourself from these humanitarian acts screams that Collin is stuck with an oppressive continuance of white supremacy is also very ableist to embrace the narrative that people will just get sick and whatever happens happens. As somebody who has had cancer, I tell you that I deserve to live. My life is valuable, as is everybody else who is more susceptible to getting sick. Masks save people. At Columbia, a third booster is mandatory. We are not even allowed to wear cloth masks and wear a medical-grade mask to protect each other. Why? Because people matter. If you have students complaining about such demand, then you educate them. That's your job. Your educators fight against big crimes. Collin can try to hide the truth of what is happening, but it is blatantly obvious to all those looking near glass walls. These are not the actions of an educated population, but rather an oppressive administration driven by personal politics and biases. I cannot express the heaviness in my heart and the sadness which I feel today after learning what you've been doing to your professors. I hope that reaching out to the Board of Trustees will cause wrongs to be made right. Please speak to your administrators and have them reconsider their actions already implemented. Let's hope that these professors can forgive you for the sake of our future generations. And to the participation, Julia Jawley. Thank you.
Charles Allen, Graham Berry.
Hi, I'm Charles Thomas. I guess I'm in a bit of a minority here today. I came here to speak on behalf of Collin College. And I guess, you know, these recent attacks from the press and many people in the room kind of have you a little bit of a bundle. When you hear more of the context in this case, I think it's very clear that Collin College could have done anything but, as you see. Michael's called back to talk to administrators a long time about a dream he had, a dream of a company spread out of the campus going rampant. I'll tell you what, if I had initiatives at my campus, Collin, to talk about a dream, I'd start dreaming right then and there. And, you know, it's not like he hadn't had a fair warning either. You know, he's witnessed the firing of Laura Burnett, Audrey Hepburn, Susan Jones. If I saw my colleagues getting fired like that, I'd start caring a lot more about my job than my students. But not Michael. The problem with Michael, he's a good man. And as such, he kind of works like a mirror. He makes you see yourself. You know what I think? Of what he was willing to sacrifice for his students, I realize I wouldn't do it. He makes me throw up. I don't like that. And I don't like it one bit. And I think some of the people in this room today should think a little bit about empathy. You know, put yourself in the shoes of the people who fired Burnett, he's lived, Jones. If Michael makes me feel this bad, how bad does he make that appear? Admit it, if you were them, if you were them, you'd distance yourself from him as quickly. I mean, if he makes me feel this bad, how does he make those worthless pieces of shit feel?
Excuse me, sir.
Excuse you, there's no excuse for you.
Hey, I am sure if you mess up this name, Yash Sayed, if you would educate me on the pronunciation of your name, I appreciate it. From Dallas, Texas. If you could give me a correct pronunciation, please.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing me. This is Yash Sayed from Dallas. I went to Collin College over my high school years under the Dual Credit Program from Princeton, Texas. It was useful to me, not just academically, but also the diversity of thought I was exposed to by the professors. And I think the firing of Dr. Phillips is a terrible precedent to show to the youth. I'm currently a graduate student at UTV and I would like to read an anonymous letter from a Collin College faculty member who also fears retaliation. So, back when I was in college, both as an undergraduate and graduate in school, I was inspired by my professors because they spoke about issues that were uncomfortable, challenging, and messy. I witnessed knowledgeable people disagreeing with one another while maintaining their respect. I learned that struggling with demanding issues helped me reflect on my values and reasons for acting the way I do, and as a result, I changed. Today, as a professor, I try to nurture my students' growth by presenting them with difficult and complex ideas and letting them decide through their own reflection process what they want to believe and think about the world. Can I have the confidence needed to accomplish my goals? I feel that my administration will back me up when I educate students about topics that are controversial. I would like to say that I feel supported, but the last year and a half have taught me otherwise. Seeing four of my colleagues not renewed for flimsy irrational and immoral reasons does not inspire me to be like the professors of my youth who motivated me to be where I am today. Teaching and learning involve, hopefully, my call leaps of faith. Will the students understand the complexity of it? Will they be afraid of facing or trying something new? Will they allow themselves to change, even if that might feel like an uncomfortable or even scary thing to do? If faculty do not feel secure in our positions, how can we help our students take those courageous steps or reach towards growth? I doubt that you consider how the actions of Collin College is robbing our faith in teaching and undermining our students' learning process. Please reinstate Dr. Michael Phillips and fill in Collin College in education that helps our students grow intellectually and morally. Take that brave step forward and prove that you are incapable and that you are capable of transformation into your better self. It is because I agree with this statement wholeheartedly that I took the time to come into here. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rania Ryan.
Hello. I am a proud student of Collin College, or I should say I was. I got my associates here a while back. The Spring Peak campus is where I have built so many wonderful memories. Fresh out of high school, still new to the country, the college felt like my second home. I made lifelong friends here, some are now my family. But I say I was a proud student not because my college classes were a while back. Today, I cannot imagine being a part of this college where there is no COVID safety protocol in actual practice. Professors here cannot even encourage their students to wear a mask. Those who have wanted better safety protocols or protested the lack of are getting fired. Dr. Michael Phillips has now joined that list. I don't get it. I honestly don't understand how my once-beloved college changed so much that what felt like home now feels like a nightmare. Please reconsider. Please reinstate Dr. Phillips. Please prioritize your students and staff. That's the right thing to do. Thank you.
That's all, that's all. Okay. Thank y'all for coming. Next item on our agenda is information report for Dr. Michael.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a town year of the annual island of the board of trustee attendance. It's on page 52. There's personnel orders on page 57. As you know from a recent retreat, we will be doing an administrative move to give trustees direct access into the personnel system so you can see what's going on with administrative appointments, faculty appointments, staff appointments, promotions, and lateral changes, as well as resignations and separations. So as such, there'll be a summary report starting in March. Over this next month, we'll work to make sure you can log into the workday and get to the data information if you're interested. Redes and expenses are reported on page 83. The monthly investment reports, both for December and January, are on pages 84 and 107. And then ACOM's report as of January 8th is on page 128 for your review. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on any of these information reports. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening, for the president's report, I have a lot of good news, but I have to start with some very sad news. Dennis Keaton, one of our retired employees, passed away last month. Dennis served the college as a math lab tutor, part-time math professor, math lab director, and he retired as the Plano Campus Math Lab Manager. He spent his career at the college providing students the support they need to be successful in their math classes. He also assisted with offering science students through the math lab for the first time on the Plano campus. He had a dry, witty sense of humor, and his colleagues appreciated his kindness and support. He retired in July 2020 after 27 years of service. Our thoughts and prayers to Dennis, his family, and his friends. After roughly 18 months of long hours of hard work, Collin College was granted a very unique designation and one that we're very, very proud of. The designation is from the National Security Agency, NSA, as the Center of Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense. This designation puts us on a distinctly different plane among academic institutions. The Collin College Cyber Security Department has demonstrated that it engages in significant community involvement, academic activities, institutional practices, and cybersecurity as part of the self-study. I will say congratulations and thank you to the program director, Urban Frentzen. Urban, are you here this evening? Anyone? You're mentioned more times than any other human in this report, so stay tuned. And I'm an actuary here, as well as Professor Rick Runa. Rick, are you here? Let's give a big round of applause. Well, speaking of Urban Frentzen, he's been selected identifying the skills, knowledge, and training requirements for a face of security engineers as part of the donation initiative by the Department of Labor. So you're staying very busy and we're grateful you're here, so thank you. This weekend, the official campus is once again going to host the state finals competition, competition for the academic decathlon. Again, hopefully, the weather will be our friend. We'll see if that actually works for us, but it is planned. Forty high schools around the state are wanting to compete for team awards, individual medals, and the chance to compete. We're representing Texas at a national competition. Brian, ask us, are you here somewhere? Brian has put this on for several years. Brian, I just want to say thank you to you if you're listening. I really appreciate your efforts. Just a reminder, this Saturday at our McKenna Conference Center, we're going to hold our annual Stetson and Stellato standoff, Mardi Gras style. They're trying to talk me into doing some things that I'm just not totally comfortable with. And Jim Orr has gone so far as to advertise on Facebook for people who might have Louisiana history to try to win a trivia contest.
It's a contest?
It is. Do you watch your markets?
Bloody.
Uh-oh. It's the largest scholarship fundraiser of the year. The foundation asks for health sponsorships and tickets. If you still need information or are interested in purchasing tickets, please see Lisa Vasquez after me. Lisa is right in the middle here. Big wave, isn't it? There she is. Right now, unfortunately, we've had to postpone a career fair that had over 100 employers scheduled to be on our Plano campus this Thursday, on February 24th, due to impending bad weather. We will reschedule that. We're very excited. It's a county-wide career fair, like I said, with 100 employers. It's free and open to all job seekers. It's a big event, a lot of work is going into it, so it's very unfortunate. On Saturday, our annual health and safety fair will be held at McKenna Campus, the conference center, on Friday, March 18th, from 9 to 2. If you haven't attended that, it's absolutely tremendous. It's a wonderful, wonderful circumstance to see all these things here. It's free and open to the public. We oftentimes hear of the charities and efforts by the college faculty and staff and administrators. And the Middle Wheels Spring Into Action Box Collection will continue through March 25th. Collin College has an opportunity to demonstrate our core values and help Collin County seniors by donating now. No donation is too big or too small. More information is in the Campus Staff Council, wherever so. Michael Buell, sociology adjunct faculty, adjunct faculty at Plano Campus, received his doctoral degree at Texas Woman's University on December 21st. Michael will be able to be in the room. Congratulations to Michael, a great effort of your efforts. And, okay. Two quick last announcements there. This is exciting. I want to announce Collin College's recipients of the annual MISAD Excellence Awards. It's the National Institute for Staff and Organization Development. We received a total of 22 nominations, with nine nominees making it to the finals. MISAD's Excellence Awards recognize men and women this year who have demonstrated an outstanding commitment and contribution to their students and their colleagues. So I want to say congratulations to the following nominees. If you're here in the room, go ahead and stand up for us, and then we'll give you a round of applause afterwards. First is David Malone, Director of Business and Tele Systems and Data Warehouse. Okay. Next is Urban Frentzen. Urban, I told you, you have more mentions than anybody. He's the program director for workforce and cyber security. We've got leaded back, professor of mathematics. Margin wide, professor of emergency medical services. Ni'amala Bala Malakani, professor of biology. Tamlin Darwin Fazio, Director of Learning Accessibility and Compliance. Tom Hall, Assistant Director of Technical Theater. Kimberly Gentry, professor of medical assisting. And Rabat Karut, professor of biology. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Excellence Awards are recognized during MISAD's Annual International Conference on Teaching Leadership Basics to be held from May 28th through the 31st in Austin, Texas. If you haven't been at MISAD, it's worth going, it's a wonderful event. Excellence Awards recipients receive a specially cast pewter medallion that's hung on a burnt orange ribbon. I'm sorry, Dr. Collins. You, you A&amp;M folks, it is a burnt orange. Congratulations, Dr. Reed. Last but certainly not least, the Dallas HR Board of Directors had two nominees for 2020 Conference Volunteer of the Year. And those two nominees were Jen Northwood, who's our HR Manager of Professional Development, and Max Walker, who's our Manager of Human Resources. So the runoff was between two of Collin's employees who were honored as the volunteer of the year. And by those, Jen, I believe you got it already, I saw you earlier. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's my report for the seat.
Thank you, sir. Okay, trustee comments. Start with trustee Gomel.
I thank everybody for attending and participating tonight. Students, it's especially great to see y'all, thank you.
Students, we are so glad that you are here and I hope that everybody is going to take time here in the next couple of weeks to go vote.
I'll let go of my two counterparts just then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see everybody. Thank you for coming and participating. Thank you to all the polite speakers. And to the students who are here, I have two tickets that I'm giving away to any one of you that wants to go to Stetson and Stellato. The first two that come and meet me after the meeting, those tickets are yours. Thank you.
Trustee Moses.
Yes, I'd like to thank you everyone for being here tonight and the job that's done by the college and all of your support. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry to hear that Dennis passed away and hopes and prayers and comfort to the family. Congratulations to everyone mentioned in the president's report. The level of excellence is always maintained and I appreciate that. Congratulations to everyone retiring. I think Jack left the room. Understandably, the chair is in line, I may divulge just a personal comment. Thank you for everyone who's reached out. My dad did pass away and I'm not going to cry. He was proud of many of the things, but he was so proud of when I started here at Collin and super proud when I walked the stage. Can't go too far in this, but he was super proud. And one of the things that always made him laugh was the fact that he was very stringent in his beliefs. But having a conversation with him always made him question, did he really believe in what he thought he did? Because he always loved the fact that we could have the conversations that we did. And I was thinking back on one of the memories of being here at Collin and having those, really, those yellow boards. Remember Regina? I still have that paper. I've gone through all these kids and grandkids and I cannot get rid of that paper. But yellow butcher board paper, and we had them up and we had different topics on them. And many of you were here back then. And in fact, at least Bob should remember some of the ruckus that came up with having those particular topics. But the thing that my dad appreciated the most was the component of free speech and how we could take what each person had to say on those boards, whether we liked it or not, whether it agreed with what we believed in or aligned with our core values. What he appreciated the most was that this institution allowed for our students, our staff, our faculty, and our community members to come in and write just a little something on these boards that left nuggets of inspiration and education for years for multiple facets of this institution. So as we're leaving and we're walking away from this meeting and we're processing what we've heard, I personally am going to continue to satisfy my dad and have those open conversations that embrace free speech, embrace the differences that we have in this room, and really make sure that we foster them and nurture them and take care of them and never let them go. Thank you again for reaching out to me. I love my dad dearly. Thank you.
So yes, Neil, I do have all 10 nominees. So to explain that one a little bit, in addition to the cost of sponsoring a table for what is the major fundraiser for scholarships, you can also buy basically Buell, Buell, Checo. And the entire reason for that is to raise additional funds. So what I'm telling y'all out there, that if you are hosted at one of the tables and you don't buy a mulligan, you are clean. So please make sure that we get as much money into the scholarship fund as absolutely possible. Give Lisa Lisa, what do we aim at this year?
Our goal is two-hundred and thirty.
About two-hundred and thirty thousand. So think about that in terms of how many students that helps. That's why we participate up here. And part of the job of the trustees is to help raise funds for the foundation and take it very seriously. Of course, we also take winning seriously on my team, Neil, so let's see how it goes.
Of all the mortals, too.
There you go. You know, when you run for an office like this, you always get the question of why are you doing this? For me personally, it's because I appreciate and I expect people to participate in the public process to the best of their ability. So I love seeing students here. I love seeing them engage in the process. I love seeing all the volunteers here engaging in the process because I think that's what makes us all better. So thank you all.
Sir, trustee Sid.
I don't have a lot to add. One thing that we did get recognized today is Collin College ranks second. Students transferring and getting a higher level education, so we should be proud of it. So students, there's things happening out there that we need to be aware of. There's some very good things this college is offering you. Be aware. Be prepared for it. I like y'all wearing masks. I was really surprised that all of you could be wearing masks, but good job on that. And again, that's all I have to offer. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. So I would close with a couple of things. Always make notes. You know, the foundation's job is to provide funds for scholarships for students. And I always tell people, and they ask me that, you know, I'm very proud that we have the lowest tuition rate of any state school, college in the state. But there's still people that can't afford to come here. And without scholarship, they wouldn't be able to attend. That's the reason that raising funds for the foundation is so important. And certainly appreciate your work and effort toward that. Appreciate the students being here. I had the distinct pleasure of going to, on February first, the paramedic class of number thirty-two graduation ceremony. I love going to graduations. It is, and I know that Abe was there and Steve was there. It is just incredibly gratifying to see individuals who have worked and achieved something that is going to change their family's life. And these paramedics, you know, I'm looking at it because I'm a little bit older. One day I might meet them, and I really am glad that they, you know, I'm going to ask them when I'm looking up, do you go to Collin College? But it is, it is just a great opportunity. I encourage you, these things are all open to the public. If you have a chance and want to feel good about yourself and what we do, they are always great. Thank you for all being here. We are adjourned, and I'll see you next month.